To bring this meeting to order like there is a meeting that I need to bring to order, but we're at least going to get it going. We said this meeting would go from 6:30 to 8:30. We're very cognizant of that time, so here we go. I'd like to thank everyone that's here for coming. It's a Monday night, and so it takes an effort, and we appreciate it. We've got some great things for you to see. As you may or may not know, my name is Phoebe Benziger, and I am going to start this ball running tonight. I'd like to recognize our panel tonight. We have Chief of Police Blaine Hall. Next to him would be David Reed. He's part of the Citizens Advisory Board. Next to him is our esteemed Mayor Dave Bowman. And then there's District Attorney Dan Hotzepiller. I would like to also recognize Bill Bell. He's our City Manager. He's right there. He will, he has a microphone, so at the end of the evening, we'll have a question and answer time, so he'll be roving through the audience. So keep your questions till the end of the night. We'll make sure that you get them asked, and we hopefully will get them answered. I'd also like to recognize Ann Morgenthaller. She's our Assistant City Manager. Council members are all here and accounted for, except for Barbara Bynum, who's out of town, so do you guys raise your hand, please? Thank you so much for coming. And also, County Commissioners. I know we have one, right? Where is the one that we have? At the back. He's back there anyway. So thank you very much for coming. I'd also like to recognize any members that were on the City Appointed Citizens Advisory Committee. I know we have two. Dave Frank is down there. Dave was one. Yep, yep. Thank you, guys. It's like old home week to see you guys walk in. We miss you. We spent a lot of time together. I was a part of this original Citizens Advisory Committee. Let me give you a quick, really quick reason as to why everybody's here and what brought us all together. In late 2018, the Montrose City Council established a public safety Citizens Advisory Committee to look at existing conditions of the Montrose Police Department and to make recommendations to the City Council concerning public safety needs of the department now and what will hold us on to the future. Seventeen individuals were appointed to this council. However, one was forced to resign due to health reasons. So let me stress, it was seventeen very, very different individuals, ranged from eighteen months to fifty-seven years that have lived in Montrose City. So that's, that was very diverse. And I, for the record, I wasn't the one that's lived here for fifty-seven years in the county. You're right, Mike. That wasn't that funny. I was reading this to Mike. He goes, "I hope you're not expecting a laugh off that one." I went, "Well, obviously I wasn't." Facilitator was hired from outside our community, and we got a really good bang for our buck with him. Beginning in January and ending in May of this year, the committee met. We discussed, we debated, we came close to arguing at times. I think you guys can attest to that, but we left being really good friends and received multiple presentations about the existing policing issues and facility conditions at the Montrose Police Department. As per the original mandate, which was given by the City Council to this committee, we were able to reach a consensus vote, and a recommendation to the City Council was presented in May, and that was to fund more police officers and expand our facilities. After looking at several options of funding, the committee's recommendation was an increase in sales tax. So let's just be really clear. I want you guys to know that the committee recommended to the council that we increase the city sales tax. That's it in a nutshell. You will learn more from this presentation tonight. I'm just kind of giving you a brief 101 of what to expect. Tonight's program will look like this. You'll see a three-minute video when I'm through talking, and it basically shows the challenges that our officers deal with on a daily basis. Following this three-minute video, there will be a PowerPoint presentation that's presented by our Chief of Police, Chief Hall, and then there will be a follow-up from Dan Hotson Pillar, who's our District Attorney. And at the end of that, there will be a question and answer period. And again, we'll have a roving microphone that you can make sure that if you have a question that's directed to one particular person on this panel, please let us know. Otherwise, we'll direct it and the need needs to go. If you have a comment, that's fine, too. I personally would like you guys to be friendly with this. We've put in a lot of time and thought, and so, yeah, I mean, think about that going forward. We, again, as I stated at the beginning of the night, we have a two-hour time limit, and we will be very cognizant of that going forward. So during the question and answer period, if you see somebody kind of going like this, that means we will answer your question, but it may not be in this forum. That we'll get it afterwards, and we'll make sure that you get it answered. At the very, very end of the evening, we have our closer, David Reed. He's going to wrap it up. He's not from the Rockies Baseball Organization, so it's going to be worthwhile. Come on, you guys. Throw me a bone up here. Thanks, Michael. And actually, I'm about done here, so that's what it's going to look like tonight. I do, again, want to thank everybody that's taken the time to come here. This, when looking out at this group, you're a very influential group of people, and what you hear tonight, I want you to remember it, and if something resonates with you that you want to share with your neighbors, with your friends, with your coworkers, I would, I would encourage you to do that, because you guys, you're the people. You're the people that we want to see, and you're the people that we are really glad you're here. And like my husband, this, we went to Santa Fe this weekend, and one of the times in the car, he turned and looked at me and goes, "Why are you doing this?" Because it's probably because I had droned on for hours about what we're doing tonight. And I did not hesitate to say, "It's because we can all agree that Montrose is an incredible community." And disagree or agree on what we hear tonight, or the process that we're, we would like to follow through, we all know that this is one, it's like a diamond in the rough. And the perception is probably not the reality. We want you guys to know that. But I want you to know that we all agree this is a great place to live, and we want to keep it that way, and we want to keep it safe. So without, oh, I actually forgot, two very important people that basically have been here every step of the way, and that's Commander Tim Cox and Matt Smith. Honestly, they are, they're incredible people, and as, as is the whole force. But they've been here every step of the way through all of our presentations and all of our debates, question and answer through the Citizens Advisory Committee. One more thing I need to say is, is that Citizens Advisory Committee, once we presented, and now I'm jumping around to the council, at that point, that committee's work was done. I mean, the people that are here tonight, listening to this, they're choosing to be here because they still have a vested interest. There are other things coming from this, but that committee's work is done. So without, I'm going to wait, I'm going to take up the whole two hours if I don't stop right now. So let's, let's look at this video. That's going to be three minutes. I think you'll like it. Again, and then Chief Hall will take the stand. Thank you.
In the sixteen years that I've worked with the Montrose Police Department, I've never seen the drug problem the way it is now. The amounts we're getting off of people, the contact we're coming in with drugs on a daily basis, it's, it's out of control. It's an epidemic right now. We need to stop it as soon as we can. My name's Tim Cox. I'm a commander with the Montrose Police Department. It's changed immensely. Sixteen years ago, we may see a little bit of cocaine or a little bit of meth. Most of the people we come in contact with have heroin, meth, or cocaine, some other, some sort of illegal illicit drug on them. Coming with heroin arrests, you have the drug overdoses, which is a major thing. As of recent, I think we've had, in the last two weeks, probably between meth arrests and heroin arrests, probably around ten or twelve arrests on, just between heroin and meth, and their larger quantities. We're seeing one took off twenty-eight grams of meth off of one suspect within the last week, and we've had several heroin arrests, and we're averaging between six and seventeen grams of heroin. When it comes to the heroin, that's a lot. Seventeen grams of heroin, that's basically, could be up to one hundred and seventy doses. So since 2013, we've seen a huge increase in drugs, and that, our felony crime kind of follows those same stats. So when we're having thefts from motor vehicles, for criminal trespasses, burglaries, all that stuff, you can see our numbers really increased since 2013. They follow that trend line. I mean, you put the felony arrests stats right on our drug arrest stats, and they just, they correlate. Everything revolves back around the drug problem, the mental health problems. We're seeing that in Montrose right now. Right now, we're on twelve-hour shifts. We'd like to be on ten-hour shifts, but due to manpower, we're working twelve-hour shifts, but reality, that turns into twelve, fourteen, fifteen-hour shifts every day. And it's the volume of calls that we're doing with and the high priority of calls. It's not like it was fifteen years ago, where you may have one felony arrest a day. We're seeing multiple felony arrests in one day, which take a lot of our officers' time. We may have to initially respond with four or five officers. That's a whole shift.
So I hope that video kind of encapsulated what we're dealing with today, not only as the police department, but I think as a, as a community. So when you think of Montrose, you think of this. I was talking to my neighbor the other morning, and he, he said to me, "It doesn't seem like Montrose is an unsafe community. It doesn't seem like Montrose is a community that is having too many problems." And he just moved here from North Dakota, and he said, "You want to talk about a place that's having problems, North Dakota?" And he mentioned some of these pictures that you see up here, in particular, some of the parades that we have, and how he enjoyed one of them the other day. We have a picture of planting a tree, a parade, the Whitewater Park, you know, and just the overall picture of the city. And that's what we think of when we think of Montrose. This is what the Montrose Police Department thinks of when we think of Montrose. We're busy. And in 2018, we actually had over thirty-one thousand incidents, compared to 2010, twenty-three thousand incidents. And as you can see, every year from about 2010, other than the little dip here, we've steadily been increasing. And it's not just that we've been increasing, it's the kinds of cases that we're currently dealing with. It's the cases that we've never really dealt with before to the frequency that we're dealing with now. We've always had sex assaults in our community. We average about sixty-nine sex assaults per year, which our detectives primarily handle. Most of them are against children. We get an occasional homicide and an occasional robbery or armed robbery, but nothing like within the last three to four months where we've logged four to five robberies. And an attempted murder on East Main Street that ended with the shooting of someone, a passenger in a car, and the bullet struck him right here because of this. This is what the Montrose Police Department and the City of Montrose is dealing with today, our felony crime rate, at a 51% increase. And as you can see right here, in 2018, we logged seven-hundred-and-twenty-four reported felonies in 2018 alone. And this stat right here, two-hundred-and-seventy-two, that's the number of arrests, felony arrests, that we made in that year. Notice that we did almost the same amount in 2010, although we had four-hundred-and-eighty felonies reported then. But to be clear, drug crimes, like heroin and meth, are felony crimes. And I would imagine probably about 25% of those are drug arrests or felony drugs. And as that usually goes, we usually are pretty good at making those arrests. We interrupt a drug deal. We do a special operation. And so out of those arrests, I would venture to say, many of those are drug arrests. And this is our clearance rate. That gap right there shows that maybe we're not making arrests on some of the things that we should be or could be making arrests on, like the sexual assaults, the armed robberies, or just the property crime, because many of those are felonies also. The frauds, the embezzlements, our population that is repeatedly getting called and defrauded because their grandson is in jail somewhere in Mexico, "Send money now, please." So those are the cases that we're dealing with. And on average, now over two felony cases a day. And I asked our District Attorney to make a comment, more than anything, just to check my stat, and maybe make a comment on what he sees from his office as far as felony crime.
I didn't check your stats, Chief Hall, so I'm not in a position to do that. What I can tell you for sure is that if you extend the graph into 2019, the lines keep going up. There's no doubt about that. And that includes, by the way, our, all of our communities, Delta included, certainly Montrose. You need to be aware, too, there are fundamental changes coming next year, when those serious drugs will no longer be felony crimes. That's March of 2020. That bill's already passed. That's, that's law here in Colorado. And that isn't, that'll make those graph numbers go down, but it takes away a whole lot of tools for us to deal with the problem, because there are things that we can do with felony offenders that you cannot do with misdemeanor offenders. And it's going to make maybe those numbers go down, but it isn't going to change the experience at all for our police officers and all of you who end up experiencing, one way or another, the effects of this epidemic, as Commander Cox calls it, in our communities.
So when you look at this stat, and then you look at this stat, thirty-one thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-four reported felonies, and this is usually the point in the presentation where I ask the audience, "How many officers do you think are working out on the street right now?" And I get various responses and answers. And I won't ask that right now, but I usually do. And then we come to this. And this is our response times. And our Chief, our former Chief of Police is sitting in the back room, and so he's probably looking at this right now and going, "Oh, my gosh." And he would have done what I did, which was ask records five different times at the very least to check this stat, to make sure it's right, because it surprised me. I didn't believe it myself. So International Association of Chiefs of Police say that a Priority One call response, acceptable response time, is four to seven minutes. In other words, that's a life-safety priority call. That's an in-progress burglary, an in-progress assault, a disturbance, a fight, an in-progress sex assault, things like, "I need a police officer here now." And in 2010, we were in the blue line right here, because that's the Priority One, six minutes and fourteen seconds. Priority Two, which is everything else, the non-Priority Response, the cold burglary, the phone call request, all the other stuff, we were about the same. And as you can see, that trend line starts going up, no different than the trend line here and here. And now, today, folks, we're just under a seventeen-minute Priority One average response time. And I couldn't believe it, until here about three weeks ago, when, and I live in American Village, pretty nice part of the, of Montrose, and I was awoken to a female that was screaming in the neighborhood. It was obviously some type of disturbance. I heard a lot of doors slamming. I heard a male saying something. And like any of you, I picked up the phone, I called the police. And I got the dispatcher who said, "We'll get an officer right out there. They're a little busy, but we'll get one out there." Okay, fine. Monday night, midnight, one of our officers, Andrew Spear, called me back. "You're not going to get a call back," just to let you know. But he called me back. That was supposed to be funny. Okay, okay, nobody's laughing. All right. Done, we're done with the humor, Phoebe. All right. But he called me back, and he was a little nervous, and he said, "Sir, I will, we will get right there." And he had a trainee with him that night. And we've been criticized lately, because we've got a lot of police officers standing on the side of the street around a car. There's four to five officers there. Why do they need four to five officers standing around a car? Why do they need four to five officers to go to this call or this call? And folks, what you need to realize is, as you're driving by one of our calls, you don't know what's going on. And ten years ago, we lost an officer, and two others got shot. And we're going to roll heavy to these disturbances every single time until we make it safe. But in this particular case, he had a trainee. And that's not two officers, that's just one, because like any other job, you're not going to send a trainee out to do the job until they're trained. So I'm waiting, and I'm waiting, and I'm waiting, and I'm peeking out the window like any other citizen would do, and I can still hear the woman screaming. And he called me, and he said, "Sir, we'll be right there. We're just a little bit busy." "What do you mean you'll be right there? You need to come here now. This is an in-progress disturbance." "Sir, we'll be right there. We're just clearing the hospital." And I could tell there was some nervousness in his voice, and I just hung up the phone and said, "Okay." And I got on the phone, because I've got an app on my phone, and it shows me what our people are doing at any given time. And on a Monday night at midnight, we had four active disturbances going. And on that same Monday night, we had four police officers on duty. And thank goodness for the Montrose County Sheriff's Office, who was backing us up, because the worst of that disturbance was a young man who broke into his stepfather's house and beat his head in with a speaker box while he lay in bed asleep. And there's your felony crime, right there. Second-degree assault. That man was airlifted to St. Mary's. So I'm watching, didn't know that, just saw it on the screen, and I'm watching my officer pull up, and now I'm getting angry, because he gets out of the car, and he's got his female trainee with him, and that's it. And you're not supposed to respond to these types of calls with just one officer. But he didn't have a choice, because it was a life-safety issue, and he responded. And so all of this also comes down to our officers and their safety. And your safety. Because, folks, this is a problem. And it's like this, and all of these other calls hold because of this, because these are the calls that take the most of our time. For instance, a sexual assault investigation from a detective takes, on average, sixty man-hours to complete just that case. And, folks, we had sixty-nine of them, on average, last year and the years prior, and we have three detectives and a detective sergeant. So what's happening is this. They're working the robbery, the attempted murder, the four death investigations that we've had in the last month, and the sex assaults are actually sitting now. And then all the other felonies are being worked by the blue suits, by the first responders. And so they have no time to be proactive, because they're trying to service the community and work this, not to mention the misdemeanor crimes, not to mention all the other things that we need to do. And that's elongating our response time. So this is what we have, as it stands. Last year, and we weren't quite there because of some attrition, we have six patrol sergeants with the intention of working, or of having six patrol teams for ten-hour shifts, twenty-seven total patrol officers, although two of those are school resource officers, one's a crime-free officer, although they do respond to calls, especially in the schools. So thirty-three responding to over thirty-one thousand incidents, twenty-four-seven, one detective sergeant and three detectives. I put 3.5 investigating sex assaults, robberies, homicide, missing persons, because the detective sergeant also does some investigation. We don't like him to do a whole lot, but we don't have a choice. Same goes with these patrol sergeants. There's one here, former one here tonight. We don't like them to take the calls, but they do, because they have to. This incident right here was really important, and I want you to queue in on something. This was Holiday Inn Express just last year. This is where a man wanted out of Mesa County on felony drug warrants, decided to go in, rent a room. He was denied. He didn't like it, so he barricaded himself inside the little computer hospitality suite. Made some threats, said he was armed with a firearm, and so we called our SWAT team. We also called a few more shifts out because we needed a perimeter. We needed another shift so that we could respond to all the other calls that were going on in the city. And when we made entry into the Holiday Inn, he decided to shoot at us. And so we ended up getting a fire, in a firefight inside of Holiday Inn. What, the point I'm trying to make is, these things happen in Montrose, no different than the bigger cities. And I'm not trying to paint that Montrose is like Chicago, or New York City, or even Denver. What I'm trying to say is, we are a small community facing big challenges. So this is the big challenges. This is the parolee two weeks ago that decided to arm himself with a short shotgun on a traffic stop. You saw the twenty-eight grams of meth on another traffic stop. The heroin, the meth, the drug dealing. Folks, in July of this year, we recovered sixty-nine grams of heroin from July 2nd to August 2nd. We recovered fifty-eight grams of methamphetamine. First month I've ever seen where we recovered more heroin than methamphetamine. And I don't know if you listened to Tim Cox, heroin is sold in units, not by the gram. And so a gram of meth is one to two doses, maybe a little more for the average meth user. Units per gram for heroin, to ten units. So four grams of heroin is actually forty doses, and now you're getting into distribution quantities. But all that will be taken away from us in March of next year, because our legislature decided that it was appropriate to make heroin and meth possession under four grams less than a felony. And this is what we're dealing with, and the District Attorney is right. It's not going to take away the problem. It's only going to make it harder for us, because now we have to build up all the cases surrounding these drug dealers. Because now we have to build up all the cases surrounding these drug dealers in order to get a successful prosecution. The burglaries, the assaults, the property crimes. And then the sex assaults don't go away, folks. These five individuals who are local, surrounding our community, decided to come to Montrose to have sex with a thirteen-year-old girl and one thirteen-year-old boy. Sex trafficking is here in Montrose. You don't just decide to go have sex with a juvenile in a hotel room if you haven't done it before. You don't decide to just go online and contact a kid to go have sex with them if you haven't done it before. And it's here. I know it's here. Because Phil Rostie, one of our, our only computer crimes guy detective, we have all of this equipment that we got from the federal government, from the US Secret Service. And he's got a computer that shows us who is downloading child pornography in the city of Montrose. We know. And what we need to do is get a search warrant for the IP address so we can come find you and have a chat with you. But here's the issue. With three detectives and a detective sergeant, we don't have the time or the manpower to get there. And what's worse is according to our computer crimes detective, we are ranked third per capita in the state of Colorado now for the downloading of child pornography. And that's not by volume, that's by IP addresses. That's numbers of people. And it doesn't go away, because that's the Alta Armed Robber from about three weeks ago. One of the four. And this year, we were criticized on. Because last Sunday, I even saw it. I drove by. And I wondered, what is five officers doing at the stop and save surrounding this vehicle? And obviously, they had two people in custody. Catherine knows, because she pulled up and interviewed those officers. That's a stolen gun out of Mesa County. Mesa County. And two individuals that were wanted on felony warrants in a stolen vehicle. All of this, except for this, just this last year, in the last month. So when people criticize and say, "You should have known, city of Montrose. You should have funded public safety. You should have known that the situation was changing." It has literally changed since the time that we presented to the Public Safety Committee. Just from July 2nd to August 2nd, it has changed that much. And of course, we all know what that is, right? The increasing traffic issues. So we have all of that stuff for this. That's the number that you have on the street, plus the sergeant. Sergeant's not in there. For ten-hour shifts, which we're trying to get back to, sixteen. That's four officers and a sergeant. Now, the city of Montrose has been good about increasing that staffing level over the last few years. And we're making progress. And at full staff, we have a team or two that even has one more. And that's why I'll show you why the ask for the numbers of these individuals is so small. But, folks, those are the individuals. That's the number at any given time on the street. Plus the sergeant, just keep in mind. The sergeant is supposed to supervise. So, you can't have one of these presentations without talking about money and the city's budget. So here it is. The city of Montrose total has about a fifty-six million-dollar budget. It says fifty-eight million here, but the Montrose Rec District uses the general fund as a pass-through. So that's where that million and so goes. You need to keep in mind, Public Safety and Public Works are funded out of the general fund. That thirty-eight percent of the pie, right there. There are several other funds. Public Safety and Public Works primarily out of the general fund. So what does that equate to? Well, here's what it equates to. Currently, Public Safety, the Montrose Police Department, gets forty-five percent of that funding source. Forty-five percent. Public Works, to include streets, gets thirty percent. That's a really important thing to remember. Because right now, the city of Montrose has forty million dollars of deferred street maintenance. So we have to share. We can't have Public Safety without also having roads. And then, of course, Admin is at twenty-five percent of the general fund money. And there's been a lot of individuals out there that have criticized the city and said, "You haven't funded public safety. You've left their budget flat over all of these years." And it's just not true. Here it is, folks, black and white. In 2011, and I want to be clear, this is just Patrol and Admin. This does not include the three other departments that the police department supervises. Animal Control, the Drug Task Force, and Code Enforcement. The gray line, trend line, is the total numbers for both of these two colored lines included. So, in 2011, we had about a four-point-nine million-dollar budget in Patrol and Admin. In 2019, we're authorized at just over seven million, about seven-point-two million is what it is. The city of Montrose has increased Patrol and Admin's budget by over two-point-three million dollars, or two-point-three million dollars, in the last eight years. And most all of that has been in staffing. The city manager and council have increased the Patrol's manpower by approximately two a year, with always the ability to over-hire by two, authorized by council. Now, that's not in the budget. But council recognizes that if we find good people, because hiring police officers is really, really tough, it's really tough to find good people. And if we find them, we need to hold on to them. And so council has said, it's a priority, over-hire by two. We do other things. Within the last year to two years, we have gone out and applied for several grants to try to fund public safety. In some areas that are best practices across the state and across the nation. This is probably our hallmark, uh, grant-funded position, if you will. This is all Chief of Police Tom Chin. He recognized here a few years ago that mental health was a serious concern in our community, and it is. And, folks, we can sit here and we can talk tough about individuals who are using drugs, but let me be clear. If you've ever had a family member that has been hooked on drugs, what a terrible thing. And those people need help. They do. They're addicts. And we have such a large community that are dealing with mental health crises, which take our officers' time. And so, the police department and the Mental Health Center, we met up, and they got a grant for a mental health co-responder. And so we now have a master's-level clinician, co, mental health co-responder, that rides with our police officers. Not twenty-four-seven, not seven days a week, but four shifts out of the week. And she responds with our police officers to individuals who are in crisis. Because what we found is if we can streamline that process, then we can get the officer back in service quicker and the individual gets direct access to a clinicianist immediately. And come the last week of this month, we will also be sharing this resource with the Montrose County Sheriff's Department. And so Holly Fox will also be embedded with the Sheriff's Department. And Sheriff Lillard will have access to her services as well. So we go out and we do the best we can to get grants. I could talk to you about the Marijuana Dola Grant, which saved us a bunch of money on equipment just this last year. But I want to get your thoughts. What do you think? I kept on talking the buzzword, Mesa County, Mesa County. Mesa County, a year and a half ago, the, the citizens there passed a public safety sales tax. Mesa County will be hiring approximately fifty patrol and jail deputies. Just April, the city of Grand Junction passed a public safety sales tax. Chief Camper, excuse me, not Chief Camper, Chief Shoemaker will be hiring forty-two combined civilian staff and police officers. Delta County, in November, will be putting a one-percent public safety sales tax on the ballot. Point-five to share with the Delta County Sheriff's Office. Point-five to share with the city of Delta and then the other municipalities within Delta County. So I want to ask you, where do you think crime's gonna go? Here's the reality of the situation, folks. Where do you think it's gonna go? Crime always goes where it's not gonna be bothered. Or it doesn't have the resources. Folks, it's gonna come here, and it already has been here. The commanders and I went to Mesa County here a few months ago, and we spent a week with a, uh, an instructor out of Florida who is certified to teach what's called intelligence-led policing. And I won't necessarily bore you with all the details, other than it's policing by business model. It's policing by meeting certain metrics. But you have to have the resources to do it. And it's policing by turning reactive into proactive. And they've done it. They've already used their resources. Call up to Mesa County and ask what their crime reduction rates are right now. Because I was told they're experiencing about a thirty-percent reduction in crime. And here's why. They have decided, based on crime analysis, that most likely, their drug dealers are actually not just dealing drugs, committing burglaries, assaults, property crimes, you name it. And so if they focus on these individuals and these drug houses and the other high-profile offenders, and they disrupt them, then you will see an overall reduction in your crime rate. But you have to have the resources to do it. And that is intelligence-led policing, plain and simple. And they're seeing success. So we want to turn this, which is the U-Sports Complex burglar here about two months ago, into this. An arrest. Because when we have the time to work these, we're actually pretty successful. This guy burglarized a church, a home, and also the U-Sports Complex, and we got him. And right now, we're seeing things that we've never seen before. We're seeing individuals walking right into homes and stealing purses and wallets off the counter. Montrose has changed. You do have to lock your doors. Because we have criminals that are that brazen today. And we need to get a handle on it. So this is our ask. This is what we need. This is what we presented. And this is what the Citizens Committee, in conjunction with the police department, recommended. We need six officer shifts, and a total of six shifts with six officers on each. That's a sergeant and five officers. Because we feel that if we go to a four-person minimum, we still have that extra individual for sick-time coverage, for training coverage. Because right now, our officers are on twelve-hour shifts, and it's tough. Because those twelve-hour shifts are turning into fourteen, fifteen-hour days. I just signed time sheets this morning. With the things that happened in the last two weeks, to include a SWAT call-out on Weldon Road, I have never seen so much overtime as within the last two weeks. Both from our Patrol Division and our Detective Division. And frankly, it's just, it's not sustainable. It's just not. Our people are tired. But to get to there, we're only asking for three. And I'll tell you why. Because it seems pretty daunting. We don't need to increase our detective staffing. We need to double it. We need three more detectives. Because with three more detectives, the hope is to pull felony crime investigation away from our patrol officers, put it back in the Detective Division so that this group can be more proactive. But they can't right now, because we only have three detectives and a sergeant. And if you've ever been back in detectives, working detectives, you know what I mean. And then we have our schools. In 2018, after the Parkland shooting in Florida, we had eighteen reports of threats against our schools in the city of Montrose. Nine of those turned into probable cause arrests, and they were serious. And we don't advertise those, because to be quite honest, we don't want people, we don't want parents to be afraid to send their kids to schools. But right now, we have two school resource officers, two, to cover the high school, both middle schools, Vista, and all the elementary schools. And so we're asking for two more school resource officers. So that we can have a full-time school resource officer in the high school, both middle schools, and one for Vista, the elementary and charter schools. And, folks, we're trying to do things that we've never done before, like start a community threat response team so that when teachers recognize students in the schools that could radicalize, we can get to them and give them the help that they need before they ever post pictures on Snapchat, holding a gun, saying, "Don't come to school tomorrow." Or worse. Folks, this is important. Just like Mesa County. It's not enough just to add police officers and say, "Go forth and do good." We have to have a direction. We have to honestly know who our top six-percent offenders are, who are causing thirty-percent of our crime. And to do that, we need an analyst. We do. And we're budgeted for some software this year that will help us get there on the technological side. But someone's gotta run it. And someone's gotta be in charge of pulling the information out of our officers' heads that know where those drug houses are, know who our high-profile offenders are. So that we can build better cases, so that we can send these individuals. To be quite honest with you, after those high-profile offenders. So far, the Sheriff's Department has been very successful with their street crimes unit. And we are asking for a three-person street crimes unit. Because just like Weldon Road here, probably about three weeks ago, we got a call from a citizen that said, "You have to do something about this. This house is being destroyed. It's a drug house. And it's ruining the community. It's ruining the neighborhood. And if you've ever lived next to a drug house, you know what I mean. You know how much it can disrupt the neighborhood in your community." And we can't say no to those requests. So what do we do? Honestly, we get a patrol team together and we use overtime, and we start surveilling the house until we start making traffic stops. And then we start pulling drugs out of those cars. And then we get a search warrant and we hit the house. On Weldon Road, we hit the house with a SWAT team, to be quite honest, because there were also guns involved. And when I say "hit the house," what I mean is, we surround the house and we call out. We don't make entry. Because it's not worth risking our police officers' lives to go into something like that. something like that. And in this case, they came out, and we recovered 17 grams of heroin, 28 grams of meth, and a bunch of other things. But here's the problem. As soon as we left, what usually happens to a drug house unless you follow up with it repeatedly? They come back. And they came back, actually, almost instantly, because the detective sergeant called me up and said, "Hey, what do you want me to do here? Because there's a guy that's guarding the shed, and I just got some intel that there's a secret room under the shed." And so we got another search warrant, and we went back, and we found the secret room. And so, folks, it's not enough just to arrest the people and then leave. We have to follow up. We have to make sure that this drug house doesn't pop back up, because a lot of these are actually rentals. And we need a public safety attorney who can follow up on the abatement side of things, because many of these are owned by individuals not even in our community, and they don't care who they rent to, as long, not everybody, but as long as they get their check. And I've had several conversations with our district attorney about how a public safety attorney can also help better prosecutions, but I'll let Dan go into that. Would you like to make some comments now?
Sure. Well, and I can address it when I'm up there, too. But I think the key here is what Chief Hall is talking about, which is not just having more people being reactive, but working smarter. And one of the challenges we face is that, in the District Attorney's Office, our scope is six counties. And so we don't always know who that 6% are, we don't always know the information that the police officers have about an offender, when that offender ends up in our system. And on paper, they may appear to be, you know, have very minimal criminal history, and what we want to do is, we want to be able to share information better and in quicker real time, so that when we first see an offender, we're not just relying on what's in the computer databases, but we've identified this person ahead of time, and so my people are prepared to inform the judges, "Hey, this is what's really going on out here." So that's the idea, but it's going to take a creative solution that I've talked with Mr. Alcorn about as well, and working together.
So here's the hope. Six officers per six shifts, increasing detectives, school resource, a proactive street crimes unit, and a traffic unit of two people. Not 24/7, but seven days a week during our highest traffic times. We'd have these individuals staffed, so that they're the ones who investigate the traffic accidents in the City of Montrose, and pulls that duty also away from these individuals. So if you start pulling away traffic accident investigation, felony crime investigation, and then you have an additional proactive unit, these individuals here are going to have more time to also be more proactive. And that's why our ask for here is not a lot. We, of course, also have quite a few parks and trails in our community, and we have two motorcycles that mostly sit at the Police Department, because we don't have the time to ride them, except for in the summertime, when one of our school resource officers, who's certified to ride it, comes out and runs traffic. And then finally, we couldn't do all this without relying on civilian support. It is going to be more of a workload, so we are asking for two more records technicians to manage that workload, and then two civilian report takers. Because as it stands right now, in 2018, our police officers handled over 3,000 phone call requests. And on average, those phone call requests lasted about 28 minutes apiece. So I had an officer sitting there, talking with somebody, granted, it's important, instead of being out on the street. And a lot of those phone call requests, lost property reports, found property reports, those lower-level reports can be taken by a civilian rather than a police officer, so we can keep those police officers out on the street. But it goes without saying, we can't hire 14, I think it was printed the other day in the paper, 17, 14 police officers and six civilians without considering this. This is our building, folks. This is our patrol report-writing area, where we have report-writing stations. We're cramped. This is the desk that we pushed up against the backside of records, so that Holly Fox, our mental health co-responder, had a place to work. This is our Detective Division, right here. It doesn't look too bad, does it? Each one of these offices are filled, 1, 2, 3, and this one right here is storage. As I said before, right now, our detectives are working for death investigations, some robberies, an attempted murder, and they're not working the sex assaults. And so, like it or not, I've got to put a detective back in investigations, actually, right now. And so I'm going to have to take one off the street. It's not an extra added position, I have to take one off the street. And right now, as it stands, this is the supply room, where all the detective's equipment is at. So we're going to move that stuff out, and no one knows this, but we're going to put it in the Wells Fargo Drive-Up, because we own that, it's kind of secret, but people know. It's supposed to be funny. City manager's not laughing. So, okay. So anyway, this is Phil Rostie's office. This is where all of our computer crime stuff is going. He just came back from Atlanta with a bunch more technology from the federal government, and so now we're going to build shelves around his office, so he can start stacking up. And then this is where our sergeants. We have six seats, six sergeants. That's where they're at. And then right off of here, we have what used to be dispatch. It's a million-dollar facility, but the citizens paid for that, and we have no intention at this point of dismantling it, because it's great for redundancy for the community for dispatch. So, folks, part of the ask is a building, where we can fit all of our staff, and a building where we can grow. But first, let's talk about personnel. It costs us $175,000 initially, initially, to hire a police officer. And that primarily is the vehicle that is assessed to them, the take-home car, and we'll talk about that here in a minute. $2 million in perpetuity for 20 individuals, forever, here on out. Now, we know, let's be honest, are we going to hire all 20 people within the first year? No, probably not. We're going to make a good go of it, and our training staff can handle probably six trainees at any given time, and that's a stretch, but we've just recently done it. And so that's more like 2.8, 2.7 ongoing. And then there's this, a building, and renovations. Now, folks, this number right here is as of two years ago. We had an architect that did a space needs analysis, and this is the number that they gave us in range two years ago, for a two-story building and then a third-story shell that would be not completed, because we know we're going to grow. And the best price for a building was yesterday. And so right now, council has asked us to update those costs. Good news is, the city already owns the land, right there in the Wells Fargo Drive-Up. The land is already paid for. So speaking of costs, I thought that this would be a good place, since we talked about costs, to insert, "Why do we have take-home patrol cars?" Because we were criticized the other day, just cut them, because that's going to save you a lot of money. I didn't have a car to take with me to work, in my employment. Let's start with the low-hanging fruit, which people often think is one of the most important things, the cost. We have this 33 patrol officers, so there's 33 cars. And let's say we go to six shifts with six officers per shift, or let's say we're even on 12s. So you need at least six cars at any given time, right? But let's say, for instance, you're going to have some overlap, so you better at least have another six cars, so that the oncoming shift isn't fighting with the shift that has the current car, because they're still out on calls, so now you're up to 12. Cars are going to break down, right? So let's at least throw another three, because they're not all going to break down at once. So now you're up to 15. Those 15 cars, minus the ones that are the spares, are going to be driven 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Right now, on average, and the City of Montrose has a formula, but on average, we replace a patrol car every nine years. That officer drives that patrol car, or if they leave, then it goes to someone else, but it doesn't get replaced every nine years. You will be replacing that fleet probably every three years. We already have done a study. It is not a best practice to give up your take-home cars, because here's why. We're not a large agency. We are not Denver, we are not Chicago. So when we have a Holiday Inn Express incident, how am I going to get the people I need to get there to save the lives, to guard the scene, when I have a SWAT officer that's arguing with the wife to get the car seat out of the personal car, so he can get his SWAT equipment in there? And then on top of that, what's it doing to our response time? And it's not just SWAT. We have incidents that happen in the City of Montrose that sometimes require our whole, everybody. They're rare. I'm not going to say they happen all the time, but they do happen. And, folks, all of our equipment is in those cars. We are not a big city where we can just call a whole nother patrol platoon to move into an area to cover something. This is the reason why we have take-home cars. So whatever funding, whatever manpower needs, if this goes away, this will hurt safety, this will hurt response times, it will hurt the safety of our community, plain and simple. So these are our tax rates, and I'm going to ask our mayor to go over those.
... said that the tax rate in Montrose is one of the highest on the Western Slope. You can see that's not true. We are among the lowest sales tax rate in the Western Slope, and really in the state. What the City Council is discussing right now is between a .5 and a .55% increase. If Delta passes their 1% increase, we are still among the lowest in the area. And what does a .5% increase mean to you as a consumer? It means for every $100, you will spend 50 cents more. But why not a property tax? First off, the City of Montrose does not have a property tax. Many communities around us do. We do not have a property tax. Yes, you pay a county tax, a school district tax, a fire district tax, and there are, when you get your annual bill, it's sort of lengthy, all the little entities that need to be funded out of property tax. The City of Montrose is not on that list. If we did become on that list, the citizens of the City of Montrose would pay the entire bill. And if you're a business owner, you know how unfair, right now, the balance between residential and business is. That's something the state legislature will have to deal with, but we don't want to put that burden on our citizens or our business owners. And if you're a county resident and you have a business in the City of Montrose, again, you would pay a much higher rate. But why is it advantageous also to have a sales tax? Well, because the citizens of Montrose will not pay 100%. You're going to pay about a third of that. County residents will pay about a third of that, because they shop in the city, and I know there's that argument, "Hey, county residents are going to be paying more sales tax, and they don't get to vote on it." We didn't make those rules. That's the way it is. But don't forget, we have a very, very healthy tourist economy in this community, and those tourists pay a third of it also. So it's much more beneficial to all of us to have a sales tax and not a proper tax. It saves us money, because the citizens don't pay 100% of that. We will, right now, where the City Council will discuss next Monday, and we will pin down a firm number on the increase that we will, as council, vote on September 3rd, and I'm going to come back to that ballot language in a minute. But we'll, as soon as the city, and I, right now, city staff is working overtime to make sure they know exactly what the cost, or darn near close, of what a new building will cost. And they will bring that information to council next Monday at our work session, and we will arrive at a consensus to come up with a number. So you will know on September, or on August 20th, what the increase will be. And then on September 3rd, we will vote to finalize our ballot language. And I want to assure you that this isn't bait and switch. We're not going to raise sales tax and then lower the amount of money that we currently provide to the Police Department. It will be in the ballot language that we, it will be illegal for the city to not fund the Police Department at a level that is lower than what we funded them in 1918, or 2018. And, I got to laugh, all right, see? You've just got to screw up a little bit, and you can get a laugh here. So, and we're using the 2018 number, because at this point, we don't know exactly how much money we will spend in 2019. We have an audited number for 2018, and that's the number that we will not be able to legally go below. So this is an increase in funding for our public safety, and that's what we need. And I'm sure you'll have questions during question and answer, and I'll be happy to address any of those. Thanks.
Mayor, did you want to make a quick comment on a lodging tax as well?
Yeah, we looked at a lodging tax. That doesn't begin to cover the amount of money that we need. And again, that would also take a vote to increase that lodging tax, but it doesn't come anywhere near the money that we need, so at this point, we're not touching that.
Thank you. So, once again, this is what we're dealing with, the Weldon Road drug house. The heroin. Been asked, in this last week, several times, "Have you seen fentanyl here in the City of Montrose?" You can't really see it, there's a little bit of a green tinge. And when you mix heroin with fentanyl, and if you've heard of what fentanyl is, it is deadly. I never thought I would say heroin is not as deadly as something else, but actually, fentanyl, one little crystal, and that's why our office... And that's why our officers don't test these substances anymore. We glove up, we take a picture, we throw it in an evidence bag. Because it could be deadly to us, just to open the bag. This is what we're dealing with just in the last week and a half. All of these things. This is what I know Montrose to be. And this is, I think, in general, what you believe our community is. Because a lot of our citizens, and rightfully so, they don't know or see what this is until it affects them, until it moves in next door to them. And honestly, the Montrose Police Department, we want to get back to this. This is what brings us to work. This is the fun. But right now, we're having a challenge. And we need your help. Plain and simple. So with that, I will turn it over to you, actually, the district attorney. And he's got some comments. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Chief Hall. The issue is whether or not, we as a community, are going to build the capacity to choose who we want to be and what we want to be like in the future. That's the issue. Are we going to have the resources and capacity to choose the kind of community we want to live in? You know, the world out there now, it's changed a lot. Seems to be an awful lot of anger. Less community civil discourse. Random acts of violence. So many that you don't know whether it was, the last one was in a mall or in a school or in a Walmart, or where it was, I can't keep track anymore. We don't get answers and help from our capitals. In fact, what we seem to get doesn't necessarily comport with our priorities and our values. Or it doesn't seem that it takes into account the lack of resources that we have, the challenges that we face as a rural and frontier community. So these are persistent problems. This hasn't happened in the last six months. Methamphetamine's been a scourge in this community for decades. Mental health issues have been part of our communities for decades. Homelessness, vagrants, they've been part of our community for decades. They are very difficult problems to deal with. You can't wave a magic wand. There's no simple answer. But there's one constant. And that is, who is it that deals first with each of these problems? Who deals with the individual who has a serious and persistent mental health problem? And is choosing to not take their meds and is causing a disturbance? Who deals first with the methamphetamine addict? Who is in the grip of a horrible addiction and making choices that destroy their life? Damage their families, their children? Who deals with first the person in the bathroom at the airport, or the McDonald's, with a needle hanging out of their arm? Completely passed out. And literally, within seconds or minutes of dying. Who deals with those folks? Our police officers. Our police officers are the ones who deal with each and every one of these problems. So if we're going to stand a shot, a chance, at getting back to the last set of slides, and I don't think we've lost it, I think we're still there. You know, we really are still a safe community. We are still a prosperous community. But we have to have the capacity to choose our future. You know, it was just Funk Fest. So lots of boats going down that river. And anybody who boats knows, if you don't paddle, and you're not moving a little bit faster than that current, you're not steering. All you are is flotsam in that current. You might spin around a little bit, but you're not going to get where you want to go. Takes oars in the water. And that's the issue, is are we together going to have the capacity to respond? Because let's be clear, we're not going to get help from somewhere else. I mean, you know, that's obvious. Somebody else isn't going to solve our problems. Somebody else isn't going to ride to the rescue and say, this is how you deal with meth addicts. In fact, they're taking tools away from us. Our systems are struggling. Our mental health system is struggling. Criminal justice system is struggling. Our school system is struggling. And we have to have the capacity, as a community, to choose what we want to be like, and what our priorities are. And I think that's the fundamental issue. And as you go out and talk to others, it's partly about the need, it's partly about stories, scary stories. Some not-so-scary stories. But what it's really about is, I want to be part of choosing my future. And I want to have a community that has the capacity to be as great as it can be. That's what's at stake, folks. Thank you.
Nope. Okay, now you can hear me. All right. So that concludes the presentations, and now it's the question and answer time. So who has a question? Because we're ready for you. Okay, John Nelson, you have a question? Wait, wait till we get the microphone, so everybody can hear.
That estimate on the building, from everybody I've talked to in the last few days, that's going to be significantly lower than reality. Particularly with all the tariffs that have now been imposed. So I think before the city council gets too carried away with .5 or .55, you might consider that it may very well have to go higher. And I take it that somewhere along the line, you're, I've heard that you're working on that now. I hope that that information comes back to you by next week.
That it, we've charged our city administration and staff to have a number for us a week from today. And they've worked very, very hard in putting the numbers together. If they don't have those numbers, then we may delay that decision. But we still have plenty of time. We do need to certify ballot language by September 3rd, so we have some time. We'll make a good decision. But thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, Dave Frank has a question.
Might be important to clarify that the building and capital portion of that will sunset at the completion of the, the payoff of the project. So I think it's important for the public to know that as well.
And what David is saying, after 25 years, that portion, and we're figuring that that is about a tenth of a percent, so we would drop from a .5 to a .4. Yes, that's, thank you.
Jean?
I was interested in the chart of the comparative sales tax rates among the cities. But I I don't know for sure, because I certainly don't believe everything I read in the letters to the editor, but I don't believe those are apples and apples. Because from what I understand, Montrose charges sales tax on food, and I don't believe that all of the other, or that most of the other municipalities do that. Is that true?
I, I'll start on this. Bill Bell may flesh it out a little bit more. The community decided many years ago to include tax, that food would be included in the sales tax. Now, part of the argument is that's a very regressive tax for those that are in the poverty level. Most of those people are on some kind of assistance. And if you're on assistance, you don't pay sales tax for your food. Many communities also have a property tax. We don't. The trade-off was made years ago, and it was confirmed again in 2002, I believe it was. There was a, an election to see if we wanted, the community wanted to continue with a sales tax that included food for most people. And overwhelmingly, over 70%, as I recall, and I looked that up when I ran for city council. Because I was concerned about that, and I was going to bring it up as a campaign issue. And when I saw how overwhelmingly the community had supported that tax back in the early 2000s, I thought it was wise not to bring it up.
Well, it's regressive for all of us, whether we're on food stamps, which fortunately I'm not, or, I mean, so I would prefer, I mean, I don't disagree with anything that was said tonight, but I would prefer that you consider piggybacking it with eliminating the sales tax on food at the same time, knowing that you would have to go with a higher percentage increase.
So I can comment on that just a little bit. So on the list up on the screen, you'll see where we rank among all the taxing entities in our area. All but the city of Delta and the city of Montrose have property taxes on that list. And so as the mayor mentioned, our community decided not to implement a property tax and left the exemption of food alone at that time. 38 out of 271 cities in Colorado exempted food. So the people that say most communities exempt food, it's just, it's not true. Only 38 out of 271 exempted food. So it's important to know that. It also equates to about $3.4 million. So if we got rid of the food tax, we would have to more than double the request here, and it would end up being 1.25% ask, something like that.
There's a question right behind you.
Hi, I've got really two questions. The first one is, that 45% number that was cited as far as, I guess, the amount of the general revenues that goes to public safety or the police department, has that number held up over the years? Is that something they do every year, 45% goes to the police department, or is that just one year, a snapshot? And then I'll ask my second question.
I can comment on that. So as Chief Hall mentioned, 45, that number is just a snapshot. But since 2010 and 11, we've been adding at least two officers a year. And we've allowed the over hire up to four officers, which means we don't budget for that extra two, but if they find two qualified candidates and can hire them, we'll take it out of savings and do that. So we've been adding the number of officers at the request of the police department since 2011. And so that 45% was smaller, and it's just growing and growing and growing. As the general economy is good, and we're seeing increases every year in our sales tax revenues, the police department has been increasingly taking more and more out of that new revenue for the city.
All right. The second question, I guess, is has something to do with these other communities in western Colorado, and what they're doing, and how much they're taxing people. They all spend money on a lot of different things, and so does the city of Montrose. We all have our different priorities. I guess I'd be curious to see how much Montrose spends per capita on public safety or the police department versus these other cities. Because I think, when we say, well, whatever, Delta is increasing their taxes next year, and they're going to split it half between the county sheriff's department and half between municipal police departments. And, well, Montrose had a 1% sales tax for public safety already for the county. I just wonder, how much is the city of Montrose spending, you know, per citizen on public safety versus all these other towns? Are we at the same level already? Are we behind them, or are we ahead of them?
I don't know if Chief Hall wants to, we haven't run those numbers, other than when we compared Durango. When, when actually Chief Chin was still here, we were talking about that. That's something we can look into and try to get some numbers put together.
Yeah, Mike, I've got, I've got his email already, so we'll, we'll answer that. And we're actually, it's a good time for you guys to know that we're on Facebook. We'll have a webpage, and these really good questions, which, that was a great question, Mike, will be posted and it'll be answered, but we personally will answer that question for you when we get an answer.
The comment that was made related to the monies that will be increased, the .55% or .5%, it will all go to the police department. But, and it won't be less than what was 2018, what was spent in 2018. You made that comment, right? And you said that would be in the ballot language. Well, that was confusing to me in the fact that won't you spend all of that .5% well, except for the building, on the police department? You know, it just, it sounds like, where will that money go?
It will all go to public safety, yes.
The .5%?
Whatever we, whether it's .5, .55, whatever we ask for for an increase in sales tax, 100% of that money will be going to public safety, to personnel, to equipment, to a new building.
But it won't be less than what you spent in 2018. That was the part that was confusing to me.
Yeah, if you, and I don't know the exact number of what we spent on public safety out of the general fund budget in 2018, but that number will not be decreased. We're not going to say, hey, we got this, this new money. We don't have to, we can spend less than what we used to, and nobody will notice. No. The what we spent in 2018, we will spend, and the increase will be going all to public safety.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, John, you have another question?
On those regional tax rates, now, are those sales tax rates?
Yes.
How many of those communities also have a property tax?
All but Delta and Montrose.
Okay. Because it really doesn't mean anything. It's our problem. And whatever money it takes to solve it, either we're going to pay the bill or we're not. So, argumentative.
Are there any more questions?
Yes, thank you. My name's Ed Voskas. I moved here, my wife and I, in 2015, and I, I just want to thank you, you officers. I actually am quite happy with the job that you've done, with the resources that you have, what I've seen. And if I could get just a little bit tangential, we live next to one of those drug houses. In fact, we had a, a city meeting, I think with Chief Chin and the district attorney, and I think you might have been there. This was in February 2018. And it comes down to a landlord, who's also the bales bondsman for the city, AA, his name is Dean Hagenraeger, Hergenraider, I believe it is. And what I don't understand is, this house, as I understand, has been basically a drug house for probably over 10 years. I've been there three years. I've seen four tenants in there, and every one of them has been a drug dealer. And basically, Dean just sort of loads the house up with the drug dealer, with the drug dealer. I never see anybody go to work in the three years that I've lived there. So, and I think if you guys check your records, you would find that you've been out to this house, 1020 South First Street. I bet you, I'm not exaggerating, 10 times a year, at least. And I'm just wondering how that works, where we have a, a bales bondsman who has this other business going on, and it's been going on for years. And I think maybe dealing with that sort of avenue would, would address quite a bit.
So, yeah. We, part of what we're talking about here tonight is that public safety attorney. So, when the commanders and I went up to Mesa County, we learned about this intelligence-led policing model. And it's not just patrol, it's not just detectives. It works, it's kind of like a, an organism, and it all supports, it's code enforcement, animal control. And it's also a public safety attorney. They are doing things up there like restraining orders against coming back to the house, restraining orders against, and I, to be clear, I use the word restraining order because that's what I know. It's basically some type of an order that prevents an individual who has used a piece of property or equipment in the commission of a crime from using that piece of property or equipment in the future. And so we just need the resources, like the public safety attorney, to address landlords who continue to rent to individuals who are making a community miserable. And I remember that meeting, and I remember, you know, essentially saying to everyone, and I think the chief of police said to everyone, and I want to say the district attorney was there, you need to give us a call. And we still need that, because we can't be, especially these days, everywhere at once. To be clear, it takes a lot of resources to take one of these places down, and you're right, only to have a landlord that then rents to someone else who's engaged in the same activity. And like the district attorney said, it's a problem, not with an easy solution.
Right. Like I said, I do appreciate what you've done. I can tell you, there's somebody in there now that at, at one point, I guess he was on your most wanted list. And I can tell you, I don't think he's found Jesus yet. And I don't think they're selling ham sandwiches out of that house. I think today, since 6 o'clock this morning, there's probably been six, seven cars that go in there for five minutes and take off. And this is going on at 2 o'clock in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, 11:00 in the morning. And it doesn't happen in the front. It happens in our alley. So they keep the front of the house a real nice facade, they mow their lawn, all the action happens in the alley. And we've got people now that go into that house, and they're not even there. They basically do their deal, meet at that house, do deals and take off. I mean, that's where it's at now, and...
So that's very similar to the Weldon Road incident, the Weldon Road house that we dealt with here just about two weeks ago. And we used overtime to do it. Essentially, we assigned a patrol team to start stopping vehicles coming away from the house, developed probable cause, and then we searched the house and made some arrests.
Tell you, I support your increase.
Well, here's the thing. You've said it tonight, we're going to do it. But what I'm trying to present to tonight is that it's, this is not a sustainable system. We can't always just assign more and more overtime to officers that are already working 12-hour shifts to deal with these increasing issues. And in your case, it's not an increasing issue, it's just a continuous issue. And I know, I live right next to one of these same houses that as of a month and a half ago, has started up again. And I'm in the same situation. So, we'll get with you afterwards, and I already know who you are, and we'll meet and we'll get something going. Thank you.
No question, just a couple of comments. Anytime I have seen a great influx of cash come into our government, at some point, the people that are responsible for that cash start thinking about, well, we can use this for another issue, or we can take some and put it over here. I think your ballot language has to be really strong, that any of this money that comes in, if the sales tax passes, that that is totally for the police department, eliminate any future councils trying to infringe on that money. The second thing is, Blaine, you'd explain to me that, that 2018 base of, I think it's 7.1 million, would remain stable. I think council needs to consider including a inflation factor on that particular year's amount. The dollars of today will not equal the dollars of 10 years from now. So I think you really need to have an inflation factor similar to what the county has.
All right, Bill, there are a couple of questions up here. Jean has one more. And then, right there-